Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, April 18th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square. We always begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'd invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, it's really nice to hear a full room saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's so nice. Doesn't it make you like, to me it just gets my skin going.
So, we have public comment first, but no one has signed up for public comment. Didn't anyone come to speak on public comment? Alright, so we'll move right into the most important thing that we're going to do today, and that is our annual volunteer report and awards ceremony. Lisa Miller is here to kick this off, and she was here last week and we declared, right, proclaimed this week as our Volunteer Week in Marion County, and today we get to hear the report and to honor all of the people that make this possible. So Lisa, thank you.
Thank you. As Chair Commissioners, for the record, I'm Lisa Miller. Volunteer Services Coordinator with Marion County, and I am very honored to be here this morning in the middle of our Volunteer Week to celebrate and recognize some of our greatest assets that we have here at the county, our volunteers who are working behind the scenes all the time, and we may not recognize that they are there, but today we want to take a moment to recognize some of them and talk a little bit about the things that we've accomplished because of them. So, the annual report has been published, you all should have a copy of it up there in front, and then there are some more copies at the door if anybody needed any. And so I'm just gonna highlight a few things out of the report because we don't want to be here all day, but just a few of the large programs where we have a lot of volunteers and some of the things that we've been able to accomplish with them. And also before I forget, I just want to acknowledge the fact that a lot of our departments have volunteer coordinators there on staff that are responsible for supervising and managing and recruiting these volunteers, and without their leadership, these outcomes would not be possible, so I don't want to take credit for the great work that they're doing. So a little bit about the numbers. If you'll see in our report, last year we had 3,541 volunteers. When we talk about the number of volunteers we have in the county, it usually runs between 1,500 and 1,600 a year. The reason that there's a difference in this number that we talk about is because a lot of our volunteers are serving in more than one program. So, these are actual volunteer positions that we have filled in the county, and this is how many hours those volunteers have put in. So between those 1,500 and nine volunteers from 2017, they've equaled out to 3,541 positions that they have accomplished, over 131,000 hours, which although it's hard to put into dollars how much this actually comes out to be, our industry standard through our independent sector puts that rate at 2275 per hour in Oregon. So that's where we get that number. So one of the programs that we really need to talk about every year is our Volunteer Victim Assistance. We have a lot of volunteers that serve there every day helping our victims of crime, and a lot of times people don't recognize that they are volunteers. They do some really great things. Last year, they served over 19,000 hours, and some of the great things that our victims have said about the advocates that they were assigned, one victim said, "My advocate kept me very well informed, so thankful for all of their help." Another victim said, "My advocate is a spectacular human being." I think they were very appreciative of having their volunteer advocates with them through Our Dog Shelter is another program that has a great number of volunteers that are helping every day to help make sure that it's running smoothly. Our Dog Shelter is a very busy place. If you've ever visited down there, there are people coming and going all the time, and our volunteers really help make that run smoothly. Out at our Dog Shelter, they're out walking dogs, helping to clean and organize, they're out in the public informing and educating about licensing and about where to find lost dogs, and also about fostering opportunities as well as adoption opportunities. And then they also participate in the Fall Frenzy, which is one of their largest fundraisers. We of course have to talk about our CERT teams this year because as a volunteer group, they have grown enormously. Over this last year, they've almost doubled in size with the volunteers, and a lot of that can be attributed to our total solar eclipse that happened that we'll talk a little bit more about in a few more slides, but it really increased awareness of the need for these volunteers to come forward, and they're out training community members and helping our community to be more prepared for these emergencies that happen quite frequently that they're there to help with. This year they were kept very busy with, of course, the small floods and some snow, but then we also had a really large fire season, so our CERT teams were helping with that as well. During the evacuation, the Brighton Bush Hot Springs and the summer homes out there, our CERT teams were out helping knock on doors and helping the evacuation efforts. And of course our search and rescue teams are very active, out-serving in the community. These volunteers, their team are highly trained, and they bring their special skills and special equipment. The 90 members gave almost 8,000 hours last year in training in response to real-world incidents. One of those real-world incidents, the missing hiker up in Detroit area, northwest of Detroit, and they worked with several agencies to help recover that hiker. And then another very interesting story that I ran into, our posse was called out to help assist wrangle two 300-pound hogs that were running the neighborhood, and they needed to help wrangle them into someone's yard because they were out running around, so they're very handy to have around. Our cadets as well, another volunteer group that's very active out in our community, these cadets, they are all under the age of 21. Most of them are going to school full-time and working jobs, and then also putting in the required training and hours to keep their status active. And they're pretty much at every event that the Sheriff's Office is, they're always out there in our community helping. Last year they participated in the fair, of course, Shop With A Cop, every year they help with that, the Donald Hazelnut Festival, and the Jefferson Safe Halloween Event, just a few events that they've participated in. But it's pretty much guaranteed that you'll see them with the Sheriff's Office out in the community. So when we talk about the great outcomes of our volunteers, we definitely have to include this event that happened last year, our total solar eclipse. This was an amazing event, and it started with planning back in probably March or April. The efforts of our community partners and our volunteers to come together and help prepare for this mass invasion of a million visitors coming to our community, and this is what we were anticipating. And we had volunteers from our CERT teams, from our search and rescue teams, our cadets, and we had volunteers at the Health Department helping hand out glasses for people to view the event, and it was a really smooth, great time for everybody, and so we really have to appreciate those volunteers. We also have volunteer board members. Through our boards, we have around 200 board members every year that are participating in helping us make informed decisions. Some of those boards include our Public Safety Coordinating Council and our Parks Commission, should be Commission. And those are just a couple of the boards that have been actively working to help make these decisions, and our Parks Commission wanted to make sure that we understood that it's not all about boardrooms and Robert's rules, that they actually do get to take field trips and go out in the community and do a lot of great things, so our volunteer board members are very appreciated. We also have volunteers out helping improve the lives of many. The Marion County Reentry Initiative is just one area where there are a lot of volunteers that are helping support the initiative, and one of the great programs that I have to bring up is the Inspire Program. We have this program, volunteers come in to teach workshops to corrections clients, helping them to learn new skills and introduce them to new things that they may not have had an opportunity to participate in before. This is a really inspiring program, aptly named. I had the pleasure of being able to lead a workshop with this group of young ladies, and it was absolutely amazing, so it's a great program for our volunteers. And of course our Marion County Fair, one way that we bring our community together with our volunteers. This fair that takes place every year, over 25,000 people attend, and it's pretty much run on volunteer power, so it's a really great time, and we couldn't do that without our volunteers. Our volunteers are always out there representing the county with excellence, and I think it's really important to recognize the fact that our volunteers, when they're out there, oftentimes our community doesn't even realize that they're not being paid because they are out there doing such a great job and doing great work and representing us so well. I have actually heard that there are some volunteers that put in so much time in the office that some of the staff actually thought they were staff because they're always there. And quite honestly, our volunteers like to have fun, and I really couldn't find an appropriate place to put this picture anywhere else in my slideshow, but I just thought it was so cute because who doesn't like stormtroopers really? So these are our cadets out at our fair, enjoying their time. So we want to recognize the gifts that our volunteers bring to the county. I thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the things that they have brought to the county. We are very thankful for them, and from the great words of the Dalai Lama, "Just as ripples spread out, when a single pebble is dropped, the actions of individuals can have far-reaching effects." No matter how small of a role our volunteers take on, they really do make a difference in the county every day, so we are very grateful for them. So, if you have any questions about the report, I'd be happy to answer those. If anyone is interested in volunteer opportunities, we advertise those out on our website and on our social media page. All this week I will be promoting some of the volunteer activities and highlights from this morning through social media, so we encourage our people to follow us on Facebook. And that's about all I have, and I'm ready to celebrate our awards.
Thank you Lisa, it's a great report. Let me just ask you really quickly, what is the biggest volunteer need that you have, an unfilled need, well you've got a captive audience here, so what are you looking for right now?
So you know this was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You peek?
I did not peek.
So, I have two that I'm actually recruiting for right now that are kind of unique positions. One of them is our Inspire Program because the coordinator is actually really looking to fill the calendar this year, so we're looking for some individuals that are willing to come in and not necessarily teach really, you know, specific things. It could be a hobby that someone has that they want to share with the group, so that's one volunteer opportunity we're recruiting for. And the other is at our Juvenile Department. They're actually working on painting a mural, and so our Juvenile Department was looking for volunteer artists in residence to come in and help instruct the youth there so that they can participate in the painting of the mural.
Thank you. And I just wanted to remind everyone that I actually volunteered at the WARP Program, the Inspire Program.
Oh.
And I was an aerobics instructor at the Courthouse Athletic Club many years ago, so I brought my cassette tapes, my boombox, my box of weights, and we did aerobics 80's style, 90's style, whatever.
I'm so sorry, I don't have pictures.
For an hour. We actually do have pictures of it, Jolene's got somewhere, Anna Whitlock took pictures, but anyway, it was a lot of fun, and you're right, the group was really great. And so what they need, I mean they need someone that can help them with cooking, pro-social activities, so arts and crafts or woodworking, I mean I'm looking out in the audience and I'll bet you we could fill up the calendar for 12 months just with the people sitting in this room.
Absolutely.
So everybody's got a talent or a gift that they can share, and you just go out there and you do it once, and then that's your turn, and so it's not a long-term commitment, but it really is rewarding.
Yes, absolutely.
So anyone who's interested, see Lisa.
Thank you.
So did you have a second question?
No, you've asked that. Now I'm trying to think of a talent, so rule me out, but thank you for it.
Fishing.
Oh.
You could explain to them how you can catch the best fish.
How you cannot catch fish.
Right, yeah, there you go.
I'm the one.
Right. And Kevin, what talent would you share?
You don't want to know. What talent that I have that I would share?
Yeah.
As a volunteer?
Yeah, the Inspire Program.
County Commissioner. No.
I thought like dog training, you work with dogs with our sheriff.
Yeah.
I've seen Cooper, and he kind of follows you.
I do have an English lab that is well-behaved, that I don't have to get in a dog dummy suit for. Go ahead and say it, Commissioner. Yeah, that could be my talent, is that I would be the designated, what is it, designated permanent?
Dog dummy.
Commissioner, permanent designated Commissioner Dog Dummy.
There you go.
In the suit for the Sheriff's Office when they have to train their bite dogs. It's kind of fun, if anybody here wants to volunteer with me. Right.
Without further ado.
What would you do? What's your talent?
I have none whatsoever.
All evil. Who wants to be in charge of certificates? All right, and then we'll take turns reading. Could you read your script?
I got it here.
You got it? Okay. Very good.
What are we gonna do with Janice not a little longer here?
I don't know.
Tell me what to do.
All right, so since...
No, you're the junior high teacher.
Right. Yeah, right. Everything I learned about working with adult elementary students in high school. Okay, so we're gonna start with dogs, I think this would be a good one for you.
All right. So outstanding nominee, we'd like to recognize two of our Dog Shelter volunteers, Kay Morgan and Angela Norris. Angela could not be here with us today. Kay, you want to come up? Kay's been providing excellent customer service at the front of the desk since 2015, processing large quantities of licensing fees that arrive on a weekly basis, as well as training new volunteers on administrative tasks. Kay's positive attitude, administrative skills, patience, flexibility, and strong work ethic have been a huge asset to the Dog Shelter staff, dogs, and our community. Thank you. Thanks for your work. So Angela couldn't be with us today. Do you want to pick her out first?
Pick her first.
All right. Angela couldn't be with us today, but she's been volunteering since 2013, most recently as a Sunday dog walker. Angela brings a positive attitude, strong work ethic, and gentle personality that is reflected in her dog handling skills. Maybe she could teach me something, say. As a Sunday dog walker, Angela can spend quality time with adoptable dogs and give insight on the dog's personality to staff and families trying to make the right decision in adoption. Angela is a pleasure to work with and much appreciated positive influencer at the shelter. Both of these nominees are well-deserving of the recognition, and thank you for all you do for Marion County Dog Shelter.
And I'm told she's not here, but I will read this. This is the, our next outstanding nominee is Annabella Flores from the Law Library. Are you here, no? Oh dear.
She's very, very busy.
Yeah, come up and tell the story.
They can't hear you unless you're talking in micro. No, it's the TV camera.
Are you on TV?
Hi, I'm Michelle Miller-Hariton, and I'm the Assistant Librarian, Law Library, the Law Library, and Annabelle asked me if I would come and accept this for her today. She's in Israel at the moment, she's been there for a couple of months now, and she's got one more month to go, and she's working on another volunteer project there, so she's very, very busy, and we're very proud of her and lucky to have her.
Let me read this just before we go. Annabella began volunteering for the Law Library in 2017, taking on the continuous duties of organizing, reshelving, labeling library books. She's professional, friendly, and eager to learn her new skills in her volunteer role. In addition to her volunteer service at the library, Annabella has also found time to volunteer at her church and with a foreign aid project job that I think we just heard about, all while attending college and working a job. Wow. Annabella is a great asset to the library as well as the surrounding community.
Thank you.
She can probably see this in Israel.
Michelle, thank you for your service over at the Law Library as well. Oh, it has new roads.
I see Scotts Mills, Scotts Mills Bridge comes to mind, but I'm not supposed to use every opportunity I have to push that bridge, although it's needed, so.
Not gonna be a covered bridge.
It could be. Okay, Kevin's giving me a bad time. The original bridge in Scotts Mills was covered. Wouldn't it be a wonderful tourist attraction? Let's have, yeah, a groundswell of support.
You know how big that bridge would have to be to get a log truck through it?
I like it. All right. Two Adopt a Road programs and families of Chinook Estates area led by Sven Anderson and Scotts Mills Neighborhood Association led by Bob and Joni Berg are well-deserving of recognition this morning. Now is anybody, are they here? Wonderful. Come on up. We'll get you, I'll keep reading and then we'll get it sorted out. The families of Chinook Estates have been volunteering since 1997 with an average of 10 volunteers. Each time they do a roadside cleanup, they clean 7.17 miles of road four times a year, which is well over the required one mile of road two times a year. Now who is the state Chinook Estates people? Wonderful. All right, well welcome. So you're Sven, I'm pleased to meet you. So this, next is the Scotts Mills Neighborhood Watch Association has been volunteering since 1997 with an average of 10 volunteers. Each time they do a roadside cleanup, they clean 2.2 miles of road two times a year, and want to thank both of these groups for their commitment and dedication to keeping the roads of Marion County clean. So Bob and Joni Berg, thank you. If you would.
Sure. Do you appreciate for all the work you've been putting into the Off-Road Program? I'd like to give you a hat. You've on the road.
Always your hunting.
I'm gonna give you four because you have a large tree. So I just wanted to cut down the glare.
All right, everybody, ready? One, two, three. Congratulations, you're welcome. Let's cover that bridge.
Wouldn't that be nice? Yes. Cover the one that's there.
All right, the next award is the Advisory Board Award. The Advisory Board Volunteer of the Year Award is to recognize individuals who have made significant contributions to a Marion County Advisory Board. This year we have four Advisory Board members who will be receiving an award for their contributions to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council. They are Don Frederickson, Pete McCallum, Ed McKenny, and I don't see Mark Calio, is he here? Couldn't come, okay, but the three of you need to come forward, thank you. So Commissioner Cameron and I have the privilege of co-chairing this group, and I got involved with the group a few years back, and these guys are stalwart, wonderful contributors to the group. I'll go ahead and read the script. It says, "All four nominees are longtime members of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council. This 32-member council advises the Board of Commissioners on community corrections and other public safety issues. Public safety policy decisions made by the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council affect all members of the community, from victims of crime to those enmeshed in the criminal justice system. Through their diverse backgrounds, community volunteer work, and experience, these council members have brought invaluable insight into the council's decision-making process, thereby bettering the lives of those involved in Marion County's public safety system. The primary focus of the council is to rehabilitate ex-offenders so that they may re-enter the community as productive members of society. Ed, Pete, Don, and Mark have encouraged and exemplified the virtues of good citizenship by touching the lives of others, particularly those less able to help themselves." So thank you, Don Frederickson, Pete McCallum, Ed McKenny, and Mark Calio for your service on the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council and to our...
To the Commissioners, thank you for all the public safety professionals we have.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Now Ed has the best ties in the county, and Pete is a former teacher, so you can blame him for my flaws.
The Program Award is intended for those volunteers who display dedication and exemplary accomplishments within the division or the program in which they volunteer. The recipient of the Program Division Award goes to Shirley Williams. Shirley, you want to come up here? Who volunteers with the Marion County Sheriff's Office currently in Adult Parole Probation Department. Shirley started her volunteer career with the Sheriff's Office, serving 17 years as a reserve deputy. I wonder if you pulled me over a long time ago? After Shirley retired from her full-time job, she continued to volunteer with the Sheriff's Office, serving on both the disabled parking and radar enforcement teams in 2008, before moving on to other administrative assignments. Shirley is currently assigned to the Parole Probation Division. Each week Shirley comes in with a smile on her face and determined to do whatever task is asked to perform. The duties are at times tedious, but Shirley shows great diligence and sees each assignment out to its completion. Her assistants frees up time for parole probation staff to focus on the one-on-one with clients more often. Shirley should be commended for her loyalty to both the Sheriff's Office and Marion County as a whole. Thank you. Her conviction to serving this community is second to none. Thank you for all you do to support Marion County and our public safety system, Shirley. Congratulations.
Sheriff's here, why don't you come on up for a second, be in the picture, and is there anything you wanted to say about Shirley since you're here?
Thank you, Shirley, you do a great job for us, and we appreciate all of it.
And then you also get a certificate, so why don't we let you hang in future person before we can follow these 12. Okay, great. Michelle Martin, you want to do that?
The next is the Youth Volunteer of the Year Award, and Mackenzie Crest, and are you here, Mackenzie? Ah, that's who you are. The Youth Volunteer Award was developed to recognize volunteer accomplishments of young people 24 years and under in county programs and departments. The Youth Volunteer Award is Mackenzie Crest, who served in the Marion County Law Library in 2017. Mackenzie started volunteering at the library in February of 2017. During this past year, her dedication to duty, strong work ethic has been noticed by all who had the pleasure of working with her. In addition to the standard law library volunteer duties such as reshelving, labeling, and sorting books, Mackenzie also assisted with... and sorting books, Mackenzie also assisted with updating and online catalog records and webpage content to help customers assess information more efficiently. She's hardworking on task and performs her duties professionally. She holds the record for both single and total calendar year volunteer hours for Marion County Library. Didn't know that was a record, but good. All while excelling in her high school honors class and volunteering at Salem Hospital as well. Hmm, is there any time left? Mackenzie has been a great asset to the library staff and deserves to be recognized for her efforts, and I agree.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Right. I'll go to the next one. Too many microphones here. Wait, this is the Mary Piermain Outstanding Volunteer Group Award. This award is in honor of the late Mary Piermain, who served as Commissioner for Marion County from 1991 to 1998. In addition to being the first woman commissioner, Mary was also a champion of volunteers and volunteer groups. The recipient of the Mary Piermain Award for service in 2017 goes to the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. Do we have council members here? I see some. Why don't you come on up? So, as they're coming up, let me read their names, and I hope I pick them all right, because there's a few new members here. Bob Anderson, Bill Brower, Keith Bondogwin, Rich Deisinger, Joe Fowler, Will Postgate, Darby Ranbley, Christopher Ream, Judy Skinner, Thomas Smith, Bonnie Sullivan, and Bryanson.
I'm going to give this to Bonnie to hold, because you've been steadying forever.
The Solid Waste Management Advisory Council is a diverse group of dedicated volunteers, all interested in improving Marion County's solid waste system. Solid waste doesn't involve cute dogs or provide direct assistance to clients. It's about garbage, the stuff we throw away and forget about. It's not pretty, however, for this committed group of volunteers, it's a passion. The council makes and supports recommendations on the county's goals of prioritizing waste reduction, reuse, and recycling, and recovering energy from the material that remains. Over the last few years, SWAMAC volunteers have been faced with numerous challenges and have been asked to analyze and understand complex information and issues. There are continuing issues the council will be discussing in the coming year. Many of the members have served for many years and deserve recognition for their contributions to the county's nationally-recognized integrated solid waste system. And before I say the final thank you on the script, I just want to say I have the privilege of attending SWAMAC meetings from time to time when my schedule allows, and they have really ramped up their game in the last few years. They used to really talk about the solid waste plan and how much time they spent, how difficult that was, and now they're dealing with China, and recycling, and budgets, and tipping fees, and MRFs, and all kinds of things that I think were part of that entire system, but not maybe to the depth and level that they're working with right now. So, we really, really appreciate their service, because this is a group, as they said, of diverse people that help us as commissioners understand what the public really wants in terms of solid waste from all different perspectives. So, it's just a wonderful group of people. They work so well together. They are so dedicated, and I just really appreciate all that they do. So, I'll say, "Thank you, SWAMAC volunteers, for all you do." Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
The late Rex Hartley served as a county judge and commissioner for Marion County from 1951 to 1966. Judge Hartley was dedicated to involving citizens in the development of the county. This year's recipient of the Rex Hartley Volunteer Award goes to Charlie Goodman from the Marion County Juvenile Department. Charlie, you want to come on up? Charlie Goodman may have retired from alternative programs, but he did not retire from volunteering. I was just out there yesterday. No, that was great. Did a ride along with Cleo. Charlie, yeah. Charlie put in over 300 hours in 2017 and remains one of the hardest workers in the program. Charlie is single-handedly responsible for the 80 cords of wood currently on hand for low-income seniors and disabled citizens in Marion County. Without Charlie's help, the amount of wood that would be available to low-income citizens would be half as much or less. Charlie has graciously helped low-income seniors and disabled citizens with yard maintenance. Charlie removed over 30 feet of a 10-foot arborabida hedge. He also designs and donates products to be sold at the Fresh Start Market. Bought a few of those. Charlie's commitment to Marion County Juvenile Department is still strong. He is always looking for ways to improve things. Charlie deserves to be recognized as the Judge Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year. Thank you for all you do for Marion County, Charlie. Congratulations.
So, this is the plaque that we have, the revolving plaque or whatever, that is the Judge Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award. And Charlie, your name has been added right there on the plaque with all of these other outstanding people that have served Marion County. So, just wanted to make you aware of that, too, in addition to the things that we handed you.
And I just asked Charlie if he's seen the new mill out there. We invested in a new mill so that the juveniles can work and do some stuff really unique, and he says he's cleaning the room where it's going to go. So, he knows all about it.
All right. Unfortunately, I don't think they're going to be able to make an appearance here. Our CCT volunteers are the next we, oh, we're going to get to you, I think. But Volunteers Joe Fabry, and Joe's been here for a long time, and he's always bright, helpful, and seems to be always with us on every issue, which should trouble people. And Jill McCormick, and Jill's back there, but apparently either can't or doesn't want to come up here, but...
Maybe, can we open the door and get a pictures? Can you see, can we turn the camera around?
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, we can. We can open the door. Jerome, open the door so we can see, everybody can see Jill. There she is. All right. Jolie, get a photo through the door there. Thank you.
Yes, give her a cheer, please. Joe and Jill are behind the scenes every Wednesday morning, helping CCTV staff producer ensure weekly board sessions are broadcast for real-time viewing by the community. Joe and Jill check audio camera equipment, create graphics, insert photos and videos, and all around make sure everything is running smoothly. Open and transparent meetings are a cornerstone of local government, and thanks you to Joe and Jill for helping to make it easy for residents to keep up with what's happening in Marion County, and I certainly do appreciate their efforts.
Yes, and we're on FaceTime Live now, if you didn't know. So, when I was on vacation in Hawaii, I opened up my iPad and put on Facebook when there was the board meeting, so I had to watch it.
Do you know that Commissioner Cameron watches it during the meeting? And so, what is that? It's like, huh?
It's stereo or whatever they call it.
It's like Twilight Zone stuff.
All right. So, also, your honorable mentions are CCTV studio volunteers, and I see Patrick, here, come up, Patrick, and Will Widows, Russ Ducey, Laurel Grove. I don't see Will or Russ, and Laurel has moved. Anybody else here? Come on up. So, before I read the script, I want to thank these four volunteers. So, we started out, we started out in 2006, maybe late 2005, with a program called How Are the Children? And it was all volunteer done. We did, I know it's over 100 episodes, it might be close to 150. We did it over a number of years. And Patrick was faithful in this, as Will was the herd director, and Laurel came on a little bit later, and Russ was on from the beginning. When we were down underneath the library, and we would sit there, and some of you were actually guests on the show, so you remember this, you would actually hear them rolling library carts on the ceiling over the top of us as we were filming. And the little camera room, the walls were so thin that when they would say, when they would start counting, the cameraman would be giving me the numbers. I could hear, I could hear Will just as plain as day through the wall. And so, throughout all of those years, they were volunteers, and then we decided we were going to end How Are the Children and do a show called Marion County Today, which was on a broader number of issues than children's issues, all the issues that Marion County does. And so, those same volunteers have been working with us in the studio every month as we went and we talked, and I'm not going to read the script here, but it was launched in 2015. We did it for three years, had 28 episodes. It was a half-hour program. Topics included the county fair, public and mental health, marijuana legalization, solid waste, public safety, and much, much more. A lot of interesting issues from the public's perception. And we featured county volunteer opportunities, and it wouldn't have been possible without these four volunteers. So, we want to really thank you and also the others that were here for all of the work you did across many, many, many years in being part of the efforts to inform the public on what Marion County does. And I think we have one more award.
I'm sorry I didn't know about this award, Commissioner, because I wouldn't have brought up the subject earlier, but it still, it just makes it timely.
I stole your question, and you stole the...
I didn't know. But this is a strictly legitimate award and recognition, and here's a little bit of the backstory. When we'd go out to events that the sheriff was there, they'd have one of their dogs, and they kept asking if we wanted to be in the dummy suit. Well, no. So, finally, just to make it clear, we decided, I don't know if it was an illegal meeting or not, no, it was actually at a board meeting, we decided that we would, yes, we would pass a resolution declaring the new guy, Commissioner Cameron, as our permanent designated Commissioner Dog Dummy, a role that he has accepted with great relish and skill, and... Oh, my, that's nice. That's frameable.
Oh, my gosh. I have one in the frame upstairs already with a picture of being in a dog suit. You already awarded this to me. This is like, oh, this is for this year's.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's an old award.
Jason, do we have, do we have a canine here so I can demonstrate to these people how much fun it is?
He just stands there and gets bitten.
So... So, if you can't tell, we have a lot of fun, but we do a lot of serious work, and I just want to thank all the volunteers that are here today and those that aren't here, that we saw how many hours that go into Marion County, because Marion County would not be as a quality place as it is if we didn't have all those people out there. And the over 1,600 employees that we have and all the volunteers we have really make this a great place to work and live, and we were dedicated to continue to do that with you to improve the quality of life for all individuals in Marion County. So, thank you for volunteering and being here today.
Yay! So, Lisa's got flowers for everybody. We have some more board business that we need to do, but how about if we take a five-minute break, and if you want to stay and hear the rest of the business, you are welcome to stay. But if you want to go on and have your morning, you can feel free to, yeah, is there snacks where? Cup case and coffee out in the foyer, and you can stay in the foyer and socialize. We just need you to move here within the next five minutes. Thank you all for being here. Okay, we are going to resume our meeting. It is still April 18th, 2018, and we're in Salem in the Senator Hearing Room. This is our regular Wednesday board session. We have just completed our annual volunteer report and awards ceremony, and before we move the consent agenda, Commissioner Cameron has a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we remove the first item on our action list today under Board of Commissioners, remove, consider approval of a proclamation designating April 18th, April 2018 as National County Government Month in Marion County.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're going to move that item to next week, because it wasn't quite ready. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's removed, and now we will move to our consent agenda.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll move the consent agenda today under Business Services, approve amendment number two to lease, a lease agreement with Pioneer Trust Bank to extend the lease at 3867 Wolverine Drive Northeast, Salem until September 30th, 2018, with the base rent being fixed at $11,079.18 per month, beginning July 1st, 2018. Under Public Works, approve an intergovernmental agreement for the 2018 emulsified asphalt slurry seal surfacing project...
Say that four times fast.
Seal surfacing project, seal surfacing project, in the amount of $472,000 through December 31st, 2018. City of Silverton, $180,000. City of, excuse me, City of Salem, $180,000. City of Silverton, $110,000. City of Staton, $45,000. City of Turner, $10,000. Also, under Public Works, schedule the final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment ZCCP, case number 17-003, R&amp;K Properties LLC, clerk's file number 5739 for April 25th, 2018.
I'll second just one little comment. Under Public Works, those slurry sealed projects, I see City of Staton, $45,000. If you recall, at our breakfast, they asked that we could look into that, that it leverages and magnifies their ability to do so much more with given dollars, so I'm happy to see that happening. So, again, I second it.
Very good. Motion and a second to approve all of these items. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 The consent agenda is approved. We have two items under Action, and then we have a public hearing that was noticed at 9:30, and we're running just a little behind on that, but the first one, under Action item and under Business Services, is to consider approval of amendment number two to the lease agreement with Nub Hub LLC to add 28,162 square feet and base rent with tenant improvements of the Health and Human Services Alcohol and Drug Program located at 2045 Silverton Road Northeast in Salem, and increase the monthly lease amount to $91,158 for a total of 45,844 square feet. And we have Larry Tilford. Looks like Ryan Matthews is here for Kerry Moller. So, thank you both for being here, and who's going to start? Larry, or do you want to?
I'll start, sure. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Larry Tilford, Silverton Road property manager in Marion County. And as you stated, we were here to approach phase two of the occupancy of the Silverton Road lease site known as Nub. We are pleased to let you know that Dan Core Properties have been moved away from and...
Those operations have moved into the north end of this facility, and if you haven't been by, it's a really beautiful project. Legacy Crafted and Coldwell Banker Commercial have been great partners with us. Kelsey Sands is here representing Coldwell, and that whole process has been very smooth for us. We're at the point now where we'd like to move into the phase two of this project. It's a large section on the south end of the building, and there are additional health operations that will be occupying that space, and Ryan is here to talk about that.
Sure. So, Ryan Matthews with Health and Human Services. So, I think our long-term vision for the Silverton Road property is to make this more of a one-stop shop for adult services offered in our department. The initial first phase was to relocate our addiction treatment services, and this second phase will be relocated, oh, sorry, apologize, and this second phase will be relocating our adult behavioral health services, as well as our adult wraparound and some specialty services like assertive community treatment. And I think the concept really... And I think the concept really being that we can link some synergies across having like services aligned in the same building, services that provide services to the same individuals. So this will be a better sort of overall customer experience where people can receive services in one building rather than having to visit two or three different locations where we were aligned previously. I think it'll be beneficial for staff that treat these individuals because they'll be able to collaborate and talk about best treatment and really kind of focus our treatment for those with co-occurring disorders especially, and just people that have high needs that are currently enrolled in multiple programs. So we really see this as our long-term plan of aligning our adult services all under one roof, and we see a lot of benefits to that. So we really appreciate the support we've received from facilities to help kind of make this vision happen and the support from our commissioners as well.
Thank you. I know Kerry has talked with the board times about that vision. So phase one was what again?
It was our addiction treatment services program.
And then phase two is all, are all the things that you're talking about today?
Correct.
Is there a phase three?
Not for this building, no. I think the next phase will be to look at some of our, we still have multiple sites, and we're really trying to pare those down. So I think sort of the next phase will be looking at what to do with the remaining services at our Lancaster building as that lease expires at the end of the calendar year. And again, trying to align services that seem appropriate. And so there will be some additional facilities needs that will come from that, kind of all with the mission of aligning like services to improve our consumer experience and to reduce the overall number of facilities that we have.
And does this fill up the building when you add phase two? Or is there more space available?
It does. No, they've, they've found space we didn't even know existed on this campus. They're actually going to be building a mezzanine to sort of add a second floor into the second side.
So you're at capacity then with phase two?
So we will be at capacity with, I mean, there'll be some space for anticipated growth, of course. We don't want to outgrow the facility, but it wouldn't be able to house additional services.
So Lancaster wouldn't fit there?
Correct. Right.
All right. Other questions? Anything else want to add? Okay.
I have no questions. So Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion. We do approve amendment number two to the lease agreement with Nub Hub LLC for 28,162 square feet, tenant improvements for at 2045 North, 2045 Silverton Road Northeast to the monthly lease amount of $91,158. No sense.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 It's approved. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, before we go into the last item, back on the consent calendar under Business Services, the first item, approve amendment number two with the lease with Pioneer Trust. I just need to declare a potential conflict of interest as that I do bank, I have a banking relationship with Pioneer Trust Bank.
Thank you for that declaration. All right, moving to the second and last action item before our public hearing. This is under Public Works, consider approval of a resolution authorizing acquisition and eminent domain of certain real properties for the Lancaster Drive-McClay Road Traffic Signal Upgrade Project. And Brian Nicholas is here to explain this one to us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Nicholas, Capital Projects Manager with the Public Works Department. The Lancaster-McClay Road Traffic Signal Upgrade Project is an ongoing federal aid project under our certification program. The funding is managed by ODOT, and I'll provide a little bit of background on the project. Here's the location of the project. It's at the intersection of Lancaster Drive and McClay Road in East Salem. And the project, here's a little aerial showing the vicinity of the project. I'm going to skip ahead to one more slide. It gives you a little bit of perspective on the project itself. So this is a signal replacement project. There's an old-fashioned, what we call span wire signal at this intersection. The new signals will be the modern fixed armed steel signal supports that you're used to seeing at most intersections today. And as part of that project, we'll widen McClay Road, about 200 feet of McClay Road, to make it wide enough to accommodate all the turning lanes that are needed plus bike lanes. It'll set the stage for potential future improvements on McClay Road for sidewalks and bike lanes down McClay. Because this is a federal aid project, we are obliged to improve all of the pedestrian facilities so they meet ADA. And in this corner, you'll see there's a couple of ADA ramps that will go in. This, there's a driveway, there's a gas station right here at this property. There's an existing driveway here. That driveway apron also does not meet ADA, so that needs to be improved. In fact, the pedestrian ramps at all four corners of the project will get new ADA ramps. So we have an existing resolution of condemnation on this project that the board approved last year. So being a, being a federal aid project, we follow ODOT's right-of-way process. And ODOT requires local agencies like us to adopt a resolution of condemnation early in the process of a federal aid project because they, they want to make sure that that's a tool that is in our toolbox. It's part of the ODOT right-of-way process. So we already have a resolution of condemnation for the project, and it covers four properties. There are four properties, one at each corner of the project that we need to get, well, all four properties to construct the project, we need temporary construction easements. Two of those properties, we are also asking for a small permanent easement to allow us to build the ADA facilities and maintain them long-term. So we've already closed three of the four files. We have four right-of-way files. We've closed, made offers, and actually delivered checks to three of the property owners. One property owner has not been, was not responsive initially to our initial offer. So we have completed the appraisal process. We've extended written offers to each of the property owners. And as part of that ODOT process, the property owners have 40 days to consider the offer made by the county. The property owner that owns, I'll use my cursor as a pointer, that owns this property up here in the northeast corner of the site, was not responsive within the 40 days. And so...
Is that a gas station?
It is, yes. It's a gas station. The property owner is GTY Leasing. They own lots and lots of commercial properties. That's their main business line is leasing commercial property to business enterprises. So the time gas station business that resides there leases the property from GTY Leasing. So we've done, in terms of notification to the property owner, the underlying property owner received notifications at the start of the project, written notifications from us. At the start of the project, before we did appraisals, they received a written offer. They've also received a follow-up letter from us once we went past the 40-day mark in which we asked them to consider, you know, reconsider your responding to our offer. We didn't get responses to any of those before we, before I submitted the revised resolution of condemnation for consideration. So, oh, and in terms of outreach to them as well, we have a right-of-way consultant that we brought on board to help us with the process. And that consultant's followed up with maybe three or four emails along the way, just asking them if they received the, you know, ask them to confirm that they received the offer and if they're considering it, if they have any questions for us along the way. So during that 40-day period, we didn't receive any response from the property owner.
How do you know you have the right email?
Well, they have responded. We actually have been successful, we've responded, they responded after I submitted the resolution of condemnation to the board.
Okay, so they very recently responded then?
Yes. Monday of this week, they contacted our right-of-way agent and said they, they have received the offer and they are considering it. And really, they expressed two concerns. They want to make sure that they understand how business traffic will access the site during construction and after construction. And their second concern is they want to make sure that we've accommodated their bulk fuel delivery. And so they are going to, what they offered to send to us was a map showing how they currently deliver bulk fuel to fill their tanks. And we're expecting to receive that sometime within about, before the end of next week is the expectation. But we don't have a firm, a firm date on when they will deliver that.
So the reason that we're doing this today before we've actually worked that out is...
Well, like I said, we have a resolution of condemnation that covers the project in it. And part of that ODOT process requires that we declare specifically what easements, the extent and the legal description that, that we're looking to acquire. So that, that first one covered, it described two easements on that property that were based on early design. We've had to modify the design, and I'll use this exhibit here to explain. So here is, the screen line is the existing right-of-way line. We have a temporary construction easement that we have proposed, and then a permanent right-of-way easement line. The circle right here is a new signal pole foundation. And these two rectangles that you see here are existing signposts. This business has a large, we're going to go back to the previous slide. This business has a large commercial sign. And it's hard to see in the exhibit, but you can see the shadow that it casts on the ground. So it's a, it's a big, big sign, and it has two steel posts.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I actually have it up on Google Maps here.
Okay, good.
I can see it.
We don't know, there's no asphalt for this sign, so we don't know exactly how big these footings are. But we have, we can see what's exposed at the ground surface. And what we've done is we've, we have designed, we've, we've moved this signal pole. It was immediately adjacent to the sign early in the design. We've moved it a little bit to the north. Still meets traffic standards, but it gets away from that sign to make sure we don't have a conflict with that signed footing foundation. That way, the property owner can keep their sign as is without impacting it. That necessitates a change to the, to the permanent right-of-way easement boundary that was shown on that original resolution. So that's the reason for this revised resolution. The reason for asking for it now is simply when we, when I submitted this to the board, we had no response from the, from the property owner. I'd still like to propose that we go ahead and adopt the resolution so that it is a tool that's in our toolbox. We're, we're in a, we're in a position now where we're always in condemnation avoidance mode. So we'll, as long as the property owner remains responsive, we'll continue to work with them, try to get to a fair and equitable negotiated agreement. But this will just make sure that condemnation is still a tool in our toolbox if that's, if that's the way the process needs to go.
I, I can't support that. So if the other two want to, that's fine. But I'm, I'm not willing to agree to a resolution to condemn something when the negotiations are still in process.
Question.
Madam Chair. So Brian, what's the, you know, what's the, the consequences of not doing this today on the project?
Doing it next week.
Yeah, practically speaking, not much. The, the, the pitfall that ODOT wants us to avoid is getting into a position where we're unwilling to condemn, and we have a property owner that simply won't settle. We have expended federal dollars on the project, and if we don't see this through to a construction, to a fully constructed product, the county is responsible to repay all those federal funds. So ultimately, that's the potential consequence, but we're far from it.
What's our ti, follow up. So what's our timeline if, before that would occur?
We are, we've committed to ODOT that we would request authorization of federal construction dollars before September 30th of this year. So as long as we can wrap up this, get our easements filed about six weeks before that September 30th date, we would make it. So we are getting kind of close, but this isn't imminent. We could pursue this for maybe three or four more weeks and then revisit the topic.
Okay. That, I think that would be the right thing to do, and just let them know that we'll hold off on condemnation. I would hold off on condemnation to come to some agreement so that we could, they could, we could purchase, right, with the agreement.
I'm not unwilling to do condemnation if it reaches an impasse and it seems like it's the last tool in the toolbox, but I'm not willing to sign a blank check and allow Public Works to have an agreement for condemnation and then decide whether or not they're going to do it based on what they're seeing. That just is not the way I make decisions.
I totally agree. As I, as we were listening, it's kind of the last action we want to take, and it doesn't seem necessary now, so I would just assume not. We've taken it, I don't know that we've really had this discussion with you since you've been here, Brian, but condemnation's kind of, kind of like our last deal.
Oh, I, I absolutely agree. I think we need to be working in a mode where we're respecting property owners' rights
and we're dealing, dealing with it from that perspective.
You know, as a bit more perspective, as we think about this for future projects, like I said, ODOT, they won't even authorize the right-of-way process to proceed unless we have a condemnation resolution on file. It's, it's that important to their prescribed process. So we're, like I said, we're not at an impasse, but I, I think, I think we pursue it, and then I can report back to you as we proceed.
Right, I think it's positive that they, that they got a response, even though it was outside the 40-day time limit. I mean, so technically, you could say, well, they missed the deadline and we'll just do stuff anyway. But I think, given that you have three out of the four that have agreed to it, and this is the last remaining one, and if we can get an amicable agreement with them, that would be my desire. And it sounds like if they're, if they're, if they're concerned about the construction process, then that means that they're acknowledging that construction process will happen, right?
Yes.
And then I think it's also a, a reasonable request to figure out how they're going to get fuel into their gas station.
And customers.
Right, yeah, into customers. So all of those are legitimate types of concerns that need to be worked out. Sometimes, you know, in other realms, I don't do roads, but when you're dealing with large companies that are not local, getting the right person to actually read the email and figure out that they're supposed to respond, I mean, I get that. So, so I'm, I'm not holding them negatively for not responding within the 40-day period. But I, I do think, I mean, it can't go on and on, obviously, and so maybe, I don't know, I don't know that we want to put a time certain into a motion or whether we want to, and then, so kind of put the little bit of pressure on that.
Madam Chair, I would, that was my next question. I would, I would give staff some direction to say, hey, we'll hold off until this time, but if they can't come to the table and respond quicker than they have, then...
Right.
Then we go forward.
Yeah. So you said three to four weeks, and look, and let's see, there's one, two, three. You don't want to do it in three weeks, that, that mass gathering public hearing. Is, wait, or maybe that's a different mass gathering public hearing. Is that on the 9th of May?
No.
That's not, that's not the major one. That's a smaller one, right?
But we do have three public hearings that day.
Oh, three public hearings that day. So do you want to make it May 16th?
I, I think that would...
Does that give you, I mean, is that too long, or?
No, no, I think that would work very well with the project's schedule. Yeah, that's not a...
All right. So why don't we bring it back on May 16th? And it needs to be resolved by then, and if it's not, we'll figure out what we do. Does that work for you?
Yep.
All right. So whose turn is it to make a motion? Kevin, would you make a motion?
So the motion, Madam Chair, so you want the motion to be...
Reconsider.
No, we want to just postpone, we just want to move the agenda item to the...
Date certain of what was the date?
To May 16th. Is that it, Jane, that we would, yeah?
You can move to table it until May 16th.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'll move that we table the item number three under Action to consider approval of a resolution authorizing acquisition and eminent domain of certain real properties of Lancaster Drive-McClay Road Traffic Signal Upgrade Project to May 16th, 2018.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table this item today and to consider it on May 16th. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's approved. Thanks. Good luck. Keep working on it. All right, now we are through with our action items, and we will open a public hearing. This is under Public Works, and this is a public hearing to consider the application of Mass Gathering Case Number 18-001, Paintball Inc. Brandon Reich is here to introduce the item. And then I think we just have one person signed up.
I do. I have the event organizer with me.
Derek Striker, are you Derek?
Good morning.
All right, so have you both come up together? So, good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. I am Brandon Reich, Staff with the Planning Division of Public Works. The item before you is the application of Super Game, a paintball event for a small mass gathering permit on exclusive farm use zone land located at 2794 French Prairie Road Northeast St. Paul. The property being used will be located on both sides of French Prairie Road in the 20,000 block, approximately 5,000 feet north of the intersection with St. Paul Highway. Surrounding properties in all directions are zoned for farming and are being farmed. According to information submitted with the application, sound amplification will be used, no alcohol will be available, and no fireworks will be used or shown. The applicant states that sound amplification will be used for public address announcements. The applicant states there will be no amplified sound after 11:00 PM or before 8:00 AM each day. The mass gathering ordinance requires the applicant to coordinate with various governmental agencies to assure there are adequate facilities and services available for the event. These agencies include Marion County Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, Department of Environmental Health, Risk Management, and the local fire district, which in this case is... is St. Paul. Each of these agencies has, was provided with a copy of the request for the permit and given an opportunity to comment. All of the Marion County Departments and the St. Paul Fire District approve the plan submitted by the applicant. Last year, the board amended county code to allow a small mass gathering to be able to be renewed for up to four years after the initial hearing and approval. The applicant has requested approval for the annual small mass gathering. If approved, the years for which the event may be renewed annually are 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. So this is the county's first time applying the new process. So if you'd like, I can describe how the annual permit renewal works, or if you have questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Great.
Today, the board has the options to continue the public hearing, close the public hearing and leave the record open, or close the public hearing and approve, deny, or modify the proposal. Staff recommends the board approve the request subject to the recommended conditions of approval provided. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions?
If I could, Brandon, this has been an ongoing event, so it's been held a few times now, is that right?
It has.
And no complaints, issues that have come forward?
We have not received any.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, thank you. Just one question. It said that no alcohol would be available, but it doesn't, you're not eliminating people from bringing their own alcohol onto the premises, or are you?
We don't prohibit, we do not prohibit people from bringing alcohol.
But you're not selling.
We do not sell it. No.
Okay, okay. And then I see that insurance and health department licenses ahead of time. You have food service there?
Yes, we have three food vendors there. We have a coffee, Coffee in Motion comes out with a trailer, and two other food vendors that supply food. Last year, they had Marion County Health come out and do their annual inspections on-site.
Okay, great. And I see that the sheriff and Public Works have approved the safety plan and the traffic plan, so I'm good.
So thank you. So Derek, would you introduce yourself formally for the record, like your name and your position, just so we have it?
No problem. My name's Derek Stryker. I work for Paintball Inc., and I'm the event coordinator for Super Game for the last eight years now.
Great. And did you have anything else you wanted to say in testimony on this?
No.
It's okay. So Brandon really covered everything.
He covers it all.
First of all, I just want to say thank you very much for going through the process on this small mass gathering and getting all of the permits and requirements. I know it's kind of an onerous process to go through for an event, and really appreciate people following the rules and doing that. It makes a huge difference. And secondly, I just want to say that my son, my baby boy, who's now 32, was like a huge paintball fan. When he was a teenager, he was out doing paintballing all the time. So I hope it's a really great event again this year, and I appreciate you putting it on for people like my son who love to do it, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's Derek.
All right, I think we're to the point where, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff recommendation, which is to close the public hearing, close the record, and approve the request subject to conditions.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and to approve the application. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All right, that's approved. Thanks. Again, thanks for wading through all of the festivities that we had today. All right, so that concludes our business for today. April 18th, I'll read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where one or two Commissioners will be present. We're just concluding our board session here in the Senator Hearing Room. At 12:30 is a Brook Lake Road Transportation Analysis Kickoff Meeting, and that will be in the Willamette Conference Room out at Public Works on Silverton Road. Tomorrow morning, April 19th, Thursday at 8:00 a.m. is the City of Salem Marion County Monthly Breakfast Meeting at the Sassy Onion on State Street in Salem. Then Monday, April 23rd, at 8:30 in the morning is our monthly, is our weekly calendar review. That's held in the Silverton Conference Room here at Courthouse Square on the fifth floor, followed at nine o'clock by management updates, same place, followed at 11 o'clock by a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officers Executive Session if needed, officer meeting, and that's also in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, April 24th, at 8:30 a.m. is our Community Corrections Board Meeting. That's in the Silverton Conference Room, followed at 10:30 by a Marion County Housing Authority Regular Board Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room. At noon on Tuesday, April 24th, is the Steering Committee for the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, and that's in the Silverton Conference Room. Then a week from today, Wednesday, April 25th, at 9:00 a.m., we're back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. And that will be followed at 6:00 p.m. by the San Am Awards Night held at San Am High School Auditorium on Evergreen Street in Mill City. So, a full agenda today, but a lot of fun things and good work going on, as you said. Anything you want to talk about?
I lost your thing. No?
No.
I'll think of something, but probably not.
Well, it's been, it was a busy week. Actually, Sheriff and I were at Halkham Middle School last night on Little Town Hall in the East Salem...
Ah, how did that go?
Public Safety District. A lot of good questions.
Was it well attended?
Yeah, there's probably 20, 25 people there.
Not bad.
Getting the word out is a challenge, right? Next door is about, and I asked people how they heard about it, and I would say over half of them were word of mouth from somebody else.
Right.
So we've got to do a better job trying to figure that out.
Well, you have to figure out, though, if people are interested, because, you know, when I was running for state rep and I first started doing these socials, and I would invite two precincts per social, about sometimes 2,000 to 3,000 people, sometimes as many as 10, I think, to somebody's house. And then I would, and they'd each get a card.
Oh, I remember those. I did it, too.
Right. And then I'd go to their house with water and like a thing of cookies, and they would say, so how many people have been invited? And I'd say, oh, about 2,500. And they go, what? And I said, so are you going to go out on a Wednesday night to somebody's house that you don't know to meet somebody that you know is running for political office? Probably not. And we'd have maybe 10 people that would show up out of like thousands of people. So to get 25 out of that, actually, is a pretty good, pretty good turnout.
Yeah. Well, today, yesterday, today was the day after, right? Was it yesterday Tax Day?
Today.
Well, today, they screwed up because their system was down most of yesterday, so people who were electronic filers couldn't file, so they gave everybody an extra day.
It said they're going to be out of service till 9,999. I saw that this morning. From yesterday till the, you know, getting...
So I guess nobody has to file their taxes.
Yes, I'm really liking that idea. I'm feeling a little bad that I sent it there.
We're off the hook.
Anyways.
And maybe it's related to technology. I did attend, and I'm sorry I can't think of his name right now, but a presentation at Chemecata of the Bald Futurist. Did anybody see that?
Oh, did you go yesterday to do that? I would have liked to have done that.
I think, yes, I was...
Was that in the afternoon?
...in the county there, yeah. I don't know what I get out of it, but the explosion in technology, they showed, how did they say that? They showed the railroad industry or the changes made over 150 years, and what's coming next, the equivalent change, will be like five years. They had a list that I should have, people were taking pictures of the types of jobs that won't be available.
They show robots and...
Artificial intelligence, all the changes. But jobs that you think just would never go away, like the one that comes to mind, because I have a son who is one, accountants. Now, when you think you always need them? No, they can do that with machines, apparently. You know what the impression I got out of it? I'm so glad I'm old. I don't think I have to, or that I'd be able to keep up. And also, an interesting one, they had a chance to ask questions, and I wish there was a bit of a line. But they talked about the social changes, that what is, the numbers like 60, 70 percent of the population won't be working. Well, that brings up all sorts of questions. Well, what supports those? Or do you? I don't know. We didn't get into that. But he didn't mention government, by the way. They might, oh, they could do government by machine, couldn't they? They could certainly replace me. He'd just kind of sit there and say yes, no once in a while.
You're irreplaceable.
No, I think a machine could do it.
I attended, I attended the Oregon Business Summit, was that in December, I think? And they had Futurists there, and one of the things that impressed me was the...
Well, it was the same person, Kevin, yes.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay, did he put the slide up of all the logos that weren't around?
Yes.
Like 10 years ago or 20 years ago?
That's pretty amazing, isn't it?
Yeah. And I remember putting that slide up on Facebook and telling people that none of these logos, and everybody was, I had like four or five people said, no, that was there, and then you'd look it up on the Internet, no, it wasn't, you know, the company wasn't around then. So, pretty amazing stuff.
Well, just between my kids, so Erica just turned 39, and the Internet was created when she was in high school. And so her worldview is still paper letters and notes that people passed and all that kind of stuff. And then Justin was three years behind, and he was doing AOL and dial-up. And as I'm cleaning out my house, I'm realizing that all of our rooms are wired for landlines so that we could actually get the Internet in all the different bedrooms, because you had to, you know, plug your phone line in. There was no Wi-Fi, right? And then Christian, our youngest, the one that loves paintball, that's 32, he was in the age of the Internet and, you know, smartphones and all that kind of thing. Just in the three and a half years that each of them were apart, the world was so different in terms of even what their high school experience was like. It's really interesting.
So, this is only somewhat related. Just this morning, I see a story that says flip phones are coming back, because people want to get away...
Well, good thing you hung on to yours.
I, kind of a futurist thing, don't you think?
But you know what? I'll bet you that the flip phone can do more than what your flip phone does, the new one.
All I want to do is talk an occasional message, which is usually, as you know, K.
K.
Right. But if you had a different phone, you could actually respond to everybody in the group instead of each person individually. You know that, right?
It just doesn't come up that often.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for the advice. I may have missed some of these.
I think we've...
Whoa, what in the world is this?
I think we beat this one.
Okay. Well, we have anything else we want to talk about?
Am I supposed to, is there three of these? Because I'm supposed to share, give you guys each one back?
I prefer orange.
You can have mine.
I'm not into the sugar these days.
Or you can give mine to whoever you're going to give yours to.
Jane.
Okay, you can have two.
That's Sam's.
Chris, you can have one. Do you want one?
What flavor would you like?
The one that burns like 10,000 calories. Why don't you give it to Brandon? Brandon, you like, you like suckers?
Sugar.
All right.
Brandon, what flavor?
I'm going to adjourn this meeting, all right? We're adjourned. Thank you.